All our meeting to order. Ms. Victoria, could you do a roll call, please?
Dr. Hans, Mrs. Raspkecky, Dr. Arrington, Ms. Newman.
Here.
Dr. Taub.
Here.
Dr. Klotz, Ms. Schulman.
This is our first opportunity for a public comment.
It's working?
Yes.
Okay. President Alliance from Melrose Hill of Oakland County. You may recall at the last board meeting, Elmer Sorano talked about HCBSS and apparently a drive behind that to focus more on what people really need in the way of services as opposed to more simplifying. I thought about that a while. And we do, we use locus to kind of define a level of service for people with mental illness. And I always saw that as kind of a pigeon-holding process as well. We'll look at this person and they belong here. So that means they get certain services. And if you're really talking about need, you ought to start the other way around and talk about what is it this person really needs? And then which locus level actually covers that? My belief is that the tendency is to say, well, here's the kinds of things that they need to lead us to a conclusion. And you look for a best-fit locus level, which means you kind of average things out. And people have different kinds of needs. Some things are much higher than others, so they don't all fit real neatly into a locus category. And it should start with, well, what do they really need? And does that locus category, does that fit in? So the other way around. So my point is, I think we're thinking of it kind of upside down. And we ought to start thinking in terms of need and then arrive at a locus score for the people who want to keep things simple, the bureaucrats among us who want to say, well, he's this level, so that means that, okay? Or he's this level and that's too high a level of service, so we're going to cut him back. So make the focus on need, not on the locus score. Make that a matter of maybe a starting point for discussion, but not an end point.
I should be receiving a response back in writing. Thank you. Anyone else that would like, anyone else that would like to make public comment at this time? And we'll go on to our first agenda item, which is committee selection. And seeing how it's really thin right now, I think we need to table that discussion.
It doesn't matter, but you can't table anything unless you have a quorum to vote to table it. And secondly, tabling something is not a, you don't table something indefinitely. You have to table it to a time certain. You can postpone something, and that's what we're going to do. But to table, you need a vote. We can't vote without a quorum.
Postpone item A until, oh, I'm sorry, Judy.
I'd offer the idea that we could put it on the agenda for the board meeting. Is that agreeable? Until the board meeting.
Our next item on the agenda is Michigan Department of Corrections project with Kathleen and Christina.
Afternoon.
Afternoon.
Months ago, Anya Eliason and I reviewed some information about this project with the Department of Corrections, and it really is focused on people who will be exiting prisons. What we want to do today is provide you with some more specific information in terms of the services that are currently covered through the Department of Corrections. And Christine is here to talk about that. But first, what I'd like to do in the name of having a composite or a complete presentation is to go through some of the same slides that were reviewed several months ago. So again, as indicated, this is a contract with the Department of Corrections to administer services to people leaving prisons. It's an opportunity for us to connect, work with the Department of Corrections and connect people to services earlier in the process upon release. And we want to ensure quality supports and services. We will be looking at outcome measures and a consistency across systems in providing services to people. Paid inpatient health plans, and as you all know, we are one of 10, will manage the contracts on behalf of the Department of Corrections. So the intent, once we get an approved contract, is to have a budget which will include dollars not only for services but also for administration. So there will be a provider network, much as we currently have with substance use providers and other providers in our network. And we will assume responsibility for providing oversight to that provider network. I might back up and say, really, the impetus of this is centered around substance use. But although substance use is one of the major concerns, many people who experience substance use issues also have mental health concerns. So again, it is a cross-purpose in our work with the Department of Corrections. Impact on people served, as I indicated, it will be earlier intervention, a single point of access or service authorization, because we will be representing the Department of Corrections also for some people who do not rise to the level of medical necessity eligibility with our public mental health system. There will be enhanced access to our prevention and treatment services and improved opportunities for recovery, not only recovery with substance use concerns but also mental health concerns. Excuse me, there are staff needs that are attached to this, and it's important for you to know that any staff needs that we may have to administer this contract will be covered through the Department of Corrections contract. We do expect that there will be a need, and whomever we may need to hire will be working directly for this organization. And again, it's important to know that not only service costs related specifically to the information that Christine is going to talk about soon will be covered by the Department of Corrections but also administrative expenses. So again, I want to reiterate, this will be a wholly separate contract. Christina now is going to talk about some of the factors involved in the work with the Department of Corrections and the people supported.
Good afternoon, everyone. I apologize I was not here for the original presentation. I was at the Substance Use Disorder Conference at the time. And so my slides are based around some questions that were asked two months ago at the first presentation. And first, really wanted a bit more of information I was understanding about criminogenic factors. And so one of the things I want to start with is giving a brief explanation of how the Michigan Department of Corrections determines needs for an individual that is in their care. And that is with the COMPASS. Now, of course, because we're an acronym-rich, I would say, society in general, COMPASS does stand for something, and it stands for, I have to read it because it's long, Criminal Offender Management Profiling for Alternative Sanctions. And it is a fourth-generation risk needs assessment instrument that is used across the United States to determine what an individual needs to avoid recidivism and in particular violent reoffending. It is certainly not my area of expertise, but I've been made a bit intimately aware of it as we've gone through these negotiations and looked at what the Michigan Department of Corrections would like us to do and what additional services they would like our providers to deliver. It is a web-based tool, again, assessing those criminogenic needs and looking at any risk of recidivism. It really looks at level of risk, and that's important to note because studies show that substance use can really be a factor in increasing a person re-entering into the correction system. So it looks at what those risk factors are and helps identify them, and then also assists in determining any additional treatment needs. One thing I would say is a different shift in mindset when you look at the COMPASS versus other tools we use to assess and screen people for levels of care, is this has to do with the higher your criminogenic need, oftentimes it recommends the longer time you're in treatment versus really looking at a person and studying what their clinical needs are and what's medically necessary is what we do really when we look at treatment. Okay, so the way it's been broken down with the COMPASS is looking at what's called the big four and the little four in terms of criminogenic factors. And so the big four really looks at individuals who are considered medium to high risk. They use the term offender a lot. I try not to use that because we're all people. We're not certain descriptions as we know that with our anti-stigma campaigns, et cetera. So if you see me pause, it's because the language in the COMPASS is much different than the language we would use. So one of the things the big four looks at, as you see there, antisocial cognition, those great thinking errors that lead to difficult decision-making, that leads a person to get in trouble, to that is leading a person to committing the crimes that they've committed and getting into trouble and ultimately in jail or prison or on parole or probation. Then it looks at what are called antisocial companions. So engaging in a peer group that is unhealthy for the person with individuals who also have other criminal records, maybe more violent criminal offenses, et cetera. So it's really looking at a person's overall makeup and who they're associating with and how they're engaging in decision-making. Their propensity towards violence, that is also a big factor to that. Difficulty in problem-solving, impulsivity, difficulty controlling emotions, et cetera, is something that also that looks at as well. And then family or marital discord, looking at any domestic violence in the family, child abuse, et cetera. And that is a big factor in what is addressed with those big four. Providers are aware of these treatment approaches because we are fortunate in Oakland County that we are very resource-rich in terms of providers that have expertise both in delivering substance use disorder and mental health treatment as well as many either have or in the past had a contract with the Michigan Department of Corrections. And so they're quite aware, and so the training or learning curve won't be as large. Okay, that brings us to the little four. The little four are issues that we already address as practitioners with an individual that's seeking services for substance use disorder treatment. And as you can see, number one is substance use. But then we look at the whole person as we always have, and what kind of case management in addition to treatment needs does the person have? And that fits with the COMPASS's little four, as they call it, employment, education, leisure, recreation, making sure to engage in those healthy activities so a person can ultimately be successful once they've been released from prison or to work towards being off parole or probation. If anyone has any questions about the COMPASS or criminogenic factors, I can move on. Yes?
I'm optimistic that we are going to have the contract. So once we enter into the contract, the person that we hire, will they have to undergo additional training? Or would you be looking for someone that's already familiar with this tool?
Sure. I think always in a case of when I've hired, you know, people or looked at hiring people, you want someone to come with a great deal of knowledge. Sometimes, though, a person has a great deal of talent that you can see that they may have a larger learning curve. But certainly, if we had our way, it would be someone that was very knowledgeable about this. And I think that is going to be very important because as we move into this workflow piece of my presentation, one thing that's going to be crucial is that person that's hired is to make sure that they are the conduit for all the sharing of information for everyone. So the parole or probation agent has everything he or she needs, that the practitioner has everything that he or she needs, that everyone can work together on behalf of the person served so that we can have better outcomes. And we see that even in, for example, our jail medication-assisted treatment program. You know, follow-through with just a referral to treatment was at about 5%. And in less than a year, we're seeing follow-through rates as high as 50%. So to go from 5% to 50% sure shows you, when you have really coordinated care for someone that's as high-risk as someone leaving jail or prison, that you can render very good outcomes. And we're seeing that now, which is why this is very important to me as someone who works very hard on behalf of the people we serve. I want people to have the best possible chances at success and in treatment as possible. And so, yes.
I have one other question.
Sure.
When you were talking about the big four, it struck me that a lot of this sounds like trauma. Have they introduced trauma into how they work with people? Or they're not there yet?
I would say it probably varies depending on provider. I feel very confident that the providers we contract with are very well-informed in trauma-informed care and can address those needs. And I agree with you. The other caveat to that big four, though, is those are the additional services that would not be funded through SUD funds. These would be funded through Michigan Department of Corrections funds because they're related specifically to any criminal behavior that was engaged in, in addition to substance use. And so the COMPASS will kind of help be that beginning assessment tool to tell the practitioner where they need to go. So we may have some providers or this new person needing a little bit of training, but we are, again, like I said, fortunate that we have providers that have a history of working with individuals on parole or probation. The coordinator key role, brings everyone and everything together, ensures releases of information are secured so everyone can talk and share information, really ensures a person gets from each level of care to the next, as well as all the wraparound supports such as, you know, recovery coach services, case management services, some of the ancillary services such as yoga that we know has been very integral in people's recovery. Those are the additional services that they will make sure are there and that parole and probation agents receive the information that they need as well. It's also a person, this person would work really closely with our access center. MDOC has been very clear in wanting a single person to bring all of that together. So right from the beginning, when a person is screened to determine level of care and any additional needs, the coordinator would be there to, again, make sure everything is followed through. So the provider also is going to do any assessment and ongoing treatment even if an individual does not meet our medical or clinical necessity. The MDOC, in working on the contract negotiations, they want every single person to receive a full assessment to determine needs. Now, when we do screenings and access, that's to determine level of care for substance use or mental health needs, the full assessment is conducted at the provider level. And so if we do an initial screening and a person does not seem to be eligible for services, that also will be funded by the Michigan Department of Corrections through one of our providers to have a full assessment to determine any additional needs. We don't foresee that happening very often per the individuals through the Michigan Department of Corrections. And as Kathleen said, the vast, vast majority of the people that will be coming to us will have substance use issues identified. About network capacity, I feel fully confident that we have the capacity to address any needs of individuals coming through the Department of Corrections. And again, it's just going to be important for ongoing communication so we can best serve individuals. There were some questions about data as well, and that is a very difficult ask because the Michigan Department of Corrections did not capture data anywhere near the way in which PIPs capture data. Regions are completely different. If it's a shared provider, they don't make a distinction if the person came from Oakland versus McComb versus Wayne versus the UP. They just have the number of people that they served for the year. So we tried and worked very, very hard. Dr. Lawson and I, we just went back and forth on the data trying to understand it and asked a lot of questions. The fact remains, it's just so very different, you can't make a comparison because it's really not specific to county. And again, when they identified regions, they're completely different than the PIP regions. So what I took a look at is fiscal year 2017 data because we've been seeing since the onset of Healthy Michigan, a large increase in individuals who are on parole or probation. We've always seen individuals on parole and probation, especially probation through the treatment courts or just if someone has had a drunk driving and they've been ordered to go to treatment and receive an assessment. But we have seen an increase of those coming from prison, which makes perfect sense. If they have insurance, they're coming to see us. In the past, Michigan Department of Corrections had their own funding. And so if an individual did not have insurance of any kind, they really managed that funding and coordinated services within the MDOC. What's nice is it's bringing together with the PIP region to really coordinate services on behalf of this person, whether it's for, to address criminal issues or if it is to address substance use issues. It's one stop for a person to have everything coordinated for them. So when I looked at the Behavioral Health Teds data, the Treatment Episode data sets, they do ask a lot of questions about if you are a court referral, on probation, on parole. And as you can see, I was able to take 1,255 individuals we served in 2017 that fit that definition. So I know we're capturing a lot of individuals now. We're just not coordinating the care to the level that we can do if we were to start managing these contracts and services for the MDOC.
As Tina indicated, many of the people do qualify for services and qualify for Healthy Michigan. As a matter of fact, it appears that there's almost 90% of the people who exit prisons who do qualify for Healthy Michigan. So if they rise to the level of eligibility for our organization, we do pick up the cost of those services through the PIP or the OCHN budget. And any of the other services that might be needed or prescribed via the court will be picked up by the Department of Corrections. And those would be the services that Christina just talked about. And there are benefits to people served, single point of contact, enhanced collaborative services. For the providers, the benefits again will be a single contract, single source of contact within this county with our organization. There will be an enhanced funding stream, braided, augmented funding stream across the systems, and we will have across the systems standardized rates and quality performance measures. The Department of Corrections certainly are the fact that they will be working with fewer contractors. They will be contracting with the PIPs to administer services. Right now, they have 55-plus providers across the state who provide the services, and it looks like there will now be around six PIPs that will be contracted to provide services. We will leverage experience, again, improve uniformity on behalf of the Department of Corrections. So it is a win-win for all of us. There are some things we, as Christina indicated, we're already doing. We have established relationships with the Department of Corrections staff in Oakland County, and that has continued to improve as we have worked on achieving this contract across systems. Financial implications, it will be a fee-for-service contract, and we will be using standardized reimbursement rates, the current rates, for the providers in our county. I'm looking at Christina, that is correct. She's shaking her head yes. And again, as I indicated earlier, we will be negotiating an administrative reimbursement that is separate from service costs. It's important, again, I want to remind people that when we enter into a contract, it will be for this single PIP for Oakland County and the people we support. We had previously discussed that there were, was at least one PIP that had indicated they were removing themselves from the negotiation and not wanting to enter into a contract with the Department of Corrections. There are now four across the state, four regions. So as I had indicated earlier, the Department of Corrections is looking at negotiating contracts with six PIPs at this point in time. In September, Christina and I attended a statewide meeting. We did meet with the Department of Corrections and the Attorney General's office and reviewed, I believe practically line by line, the contract between our organizations. There were a number of recommendations, and we are still in contract negotiations. Probably the biggest point of contract negotiations in our negotiations has to do with the administrative cost. We had proposed a percentage administrative cost. The Department of Corrections had several questions about that, and we're in the process of answering those. Both Christina and Anya are on the contract negotiation team as it relates to the administrative cost. I don't know, Christine, if there's anything else you wanted to indicate. I believe there's a meeting soon.
There is. The executive committee, which is Anya Eliason is on it, I am on it, Joe Sedlock from Region Five. We are doing a large portion of the negotiations on behalf of the PIPs, and we should have another meeting that's being scheduled towards the end of the month in November, and that's to finalize that last piece with the administrative rate.
Yes, in the slide I had indicated, it looked like we had expected to bring the contract, draft contract, for approval at the November board meeting. At this point in time, it appears that is not going to happen. So there will be another delay because of the need to nail down these final contract issues. We'll keep you posted certainly as things develop. We remain very positive about this contract. I think it's important for you to know that the Department of Corrections also remains positive about moving forward with the remaining PIPs. And mutually, we believe this is going to be a good thing for the people we support. Are there any questions? Oh. I asked if there were any questions. I think that was from Alkaya's point.
What is the pushback from other PIPs that have dropped out?
Well, there are several reasons. Certainly, some of the larger regions or some of the regions felt that it was a bit of a distraction from their current PIP contracts. Some had had previous experience with the Department of Corrections that weren't necessarily positive. Some questioned whether there would indeed be sufficient funding to do this joint venture, not only because of the dollar amount through the Department of Corrections, but also because of their own financial positions.
So I would suspect that the largest So I would suspect that the largest negotiating point would be the administrative fees. And what's included in administrative fees?
Primarily staffing costs and any back office costs. There would be claims to be paid, certainly staff that would need to administer the contract. I will remind people that we also have indicated to the department that we're willing to assume contractual responsibilities for other regions if they would consider us. There would be additional administrative costs for that also to make sure any geographical problems we have, travel costs, communication costs would be covered. Christine, is anything I'm missing?
No, it's essentially, you know, everything I talked about with that coordinator, making sure everyone and everything that needs to occur occurs. So you do have to have staffing positions for that, which is the administrative cost. I think with the difficulty in determining regions with the data, it's difficult to try to determine what our allocation would be and then what administrative rate it would be. So there's some negotiation there that's going on.
Could there be collaboration amongst other PIPs for the backroom services?
Not entirely sure I understand your question, but I would say now that when there's an individual who's maybe been served in McComb County and they moved to Oakland County, there's certainly cross-PIP work that is done with obviously permission for the benefit of the person served. But I don't know if that's exactly the question that you were asking.
That's a good point, and I'm glad you brought that up too. But what I was trying to get to is the backroom services, if you pooled each other's fees for the backroom services, would that be a savings on the administrative end?
I think the MDOC is going to recognize the savings because oftentimes, even with individuals receiving Healthy Michigan, they were utilizing MDOC funds to supplement treatment. And by being able to coordinate very closely and have all services under one roof, that they're going to see an administrative savings there in general. Because they were spending funds that they probably didn't need to be spending on treatment because it was covered in medically necessary or clinically necessary treatment and could have been covered from Medicaid. We've seen that, not as much in Oakland County, but there was definitely in some other regions where it was and probably at some point there. And now, if you have the same therapist, the same agency addressing both the criminogenic factors and their substance use and mental health needs, you can recognize savings there as well. Because you can utilize all the fund sources that we have that would normally be a person's right to be funded under and then save the MDOC funds for those that are very specific to the criminogenic needs.
What's the length of time for the contract?
I was throwing around three years. But I think with a first time to make people comfortable, a one-year contract to make sure anything contractually was ironed out, and then moving to a three- or five-year contract if everyone was satisfied with the relationship after the first year.
That is what was talked about. If I could also add, Sid, I think your observation about any back office efficiencies is something we'll look at. I do know that many of the providers are already in our network, they're in our system. So I think there's going to have to be some localization or regionalization relative to provider, the management of the providers and even claims paid because there will be both. I mean, it'll be separated because there's two separate funds. But I think in terms of managing the back office, we may be better served locally. But nonetheless, we can take that forward and find out what kind of efficiencies we could get.
Very much.
I was just going to comment, Sid, to your point. If you'll remember, we're members of MEACHI, which is the PIP sharing resources. So even with the MDOC negotiations, MEACHI, meaning all the PIPs, put in funds to hire a project coordinator to help negotiate statewide this contract with MDOC. So it has worked well, we have done it. But I will say, as you heard, some of the PIPs have dropped out, which makes it a little challenging when you go into it with everyone planning to spend resources equally across PIPs and then four drop out in the middle of the process. So it has its benefits and it has its challenges when trying to coordinate and share resources amongst all the PIPs jointly.
It is working. Good. So with all that going on and with PIPs dropping left and right, so to speak, I wasn't really clear in understanding, are we looking to grow a larger piece of the pie in terms of supporting part of the state? Or are we still going to stick with our portion of the geography and then there will be sections of the state just not covered?
I believe the intent is to inform, well, we have already informed the department, we would be willing to consider Region Two, which is the northern part. They were the first to indicated they weren't interested at that time. We were hearing some things. So we also said if there were any other geographical areas, we would like to have conversation with them and be considered. I do know that the Department of Corrections at this point in time is not interested in having a region that's not served because that would mean they would have to retain their own staff and fulfill that responsibility, which would then kind of bifurcate the system again or the management system. So they have not had further discussion with us. It's my understanding, going forward, they want to make sure we get through to a final contract and then have further discussion about those geographical areas that are currently not covered.
Another challenge that I see with the one-year, five-year contract approach is that the one-year is sort of like grants. So, and we know we're going to have to hire people to provide the administrative support on this. It's sort of weird when you know you're going to hire them, you can't be sure that you'll be able to pay for them next year and we may have to let them go. Are we looking at that, are we looking at bringing them on as contract for the first year rather than employee? Is there some sort of benefit or challenge? Because again, I look at it like one-year is sort of like our lives of our grants.
At this point in time, we are looking at hiring. It would be our expectation, I guess I have to say, we have a one-year PIP contract, one-year general fund CMHSP contract, our grants are all one-year. We are positive about that. At this point in time, we're not inclined to contract, but I think that is something we can consider. I think we'd be more interested in being fully employed and especially if we have larger regions, other regions to support, we would be likely to do that, not contract and hire directly.
I'd like to return to the data piece. You mentioned, Christina, you mentioned that the Department of Corrections identifies regions differently from how we do. What I want to know is, does that, their approach being different from ours and for data collection, does that present any kind of barrier to us? Is there any talk, I mean, if you're looking hopefully down the road for maybe six years, if you're doing three to five in a one-year contract, is there any notion about them realigning their regions that might make?
I think that's what they'll do because of the desire to contract with MDOC. And we thankfully will be gathering all of that data in that first year. And it's one of the reasons why there was a bit of a discussion about potentially a first year to see, because it was hard to determine. You know, they couldn't come to each PIP region and say, there were this many thousands served in your region this last year. Unless it was like a really tiny region like Region Two, which they were able to pinpoint because it was only about 35 to 40 individuals served in fiscal year 17 through the Michigan Department of Corrections. And so they recognize that, they recognize that they have to capture that a bit differently. But again, the beauty of having the contract is then we capture all of that data and we get to see a snapshot for the first year about how many. I truly though believe that the Teds data does give us a decent depiction of what we will see. It'll be increased a little bit and certainly it'll be increased in terms of managing those services that address the criminogenic needs of an individual. But I think we're pretty close that we could be, you know, about 12 to 1,800 individuals if we're missing a few. I think the majority are picked up in that though. Because if someone walks through our doors that has no insurance at all and they meet criteria for services, we can fund them through the Substance Abuse Prevention and Treatment Block Grant through SAMSA. And so I think we're capturing them, both the uninsured and those with Healthy Michigan as well. So I'm not as concerned about it. I think we capture enough data that we have a decent depiction. And they have corroborated the fact that the tri-county area does have the highest number of individuals served through the Michigan Department of Corrections.
So you're confident that people will not fall between the cracks or there will be a solid transition from the Department of Corrections?
I do, I do, especially because of that. I sat on, or I co-chaired the clinical work group for this as well. And one of the largest topics was not allowing people to miss out on services that could truly benefit them. And that's why in the beginning of designing this, it was very important to the clinical work group that there be some form of coordinator who is there to make sure everything, all the pieces fit together and that a person receives everything they need. You're welcome.
Any other questions, Sid? Any capital improvements that are required by us?
Think of any, no.
Right, I think one year is better than five. That's my personal feeling because you bite out of the apple after the first year, especially since people have dropped out.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Very much.
And Christina's going to stay on.
I'm staying with her.
Oh, okay. We'll take you.
Nice.
Hey, so this is my Service Network Team update. It's been quite a while since I've been in front of you, so I'm glad to provide you with an update. And this is going to be about the State Opioid Response to the Opiate Crisis Grant. So as we all know, the federal government is and has been looking to provide a response to the opiate crisis and the opiate epidemic. They fund allocation for substance use disorder and prevention and treatment services. The first wave of that was the state-targeted response grant, and then they wanted to continue responding. They're responding in many different ways. Some is going through law enforcement, some is going through public health, and then a great deal is going through the behavioral health system. So I want to start by reminding everyone of the state-targeted response grant, which we received last year. We are in the second year of funding, and that was the first wave of funding that came from the federal government to target the crisis. So we are in the second year of funding. We are not sure that there will be a third year of funding. And so we try to choose very wisely when we have grants like this, that they are things that we can look to and sustain. So when I made the application for this and we looked at what we were going to be applying for, it was things that we had the dream to do anyway and were already in planning. And so first was the Jail Medication-Assisted Treatment Program. We had been in planning with the Oakland County Sheriff's Office for about a year when these funds came down and the state encouraged us to apply for our program. It was fairly unique. There was only about three in the nation, there had not been one like this in Michigan yet. And so we applied for and we received the funds. And I talked a little bit about how well that program is going and the response and follow-through once released from jail is. So that's continuing to be funded, it's in its second year. We are very happy with the outcomes and they continue to improve. We also received transportation and medication-assisted treatment. Oftentimes, a person is going to the clinic every single day and transportation can be a barrier. And funds were made available so that we could provide transportation. And this allows more individuals access to medication-assisted treatment. In the past, when an individual had no method of transportation and they were really struggling and struggling with taking the bus every day, et cetera, they would often request a different type of treatment for ease of access. This allows every person to receive transportation to treatment at no cost to them whatsoever. And it's been very helpful to the people we serve. That was also a goal we had, to look at transportation already in our strategic plan. And so it's again, something we applied for to pilot through these funds and then look at sustaining with Public Act II funds in the future, the same as the Jail Medication-Assisted Treatment Program. The intent has always been for both to be funded through our Public Act II funds. We then had a prevention program, Strengthening Families, that has gone well. It's a rather expensive program and a little bit difficult for the providers to deliver under the means that were given to us through the department. But they've done a great job and they've done several groups and have continued to do that. In learning through this, this might not be one of the evidence-based services that we look to continue to fund. There are other evidence-based services in prevention that we utilize that are just rendering better results. And so we'll take a look at that at the end of the grant and decide. Unlike treatment, that wouldn't impact anyone because it goes through shorter cycles. So every cycle will have been completed for families with that. And then we have the Criminal Justice Mission Prison Program. The prison program is not something that we applied for under the state-targeted response grant. It was one that the department approached us and asked to be involved in. They asked the tri-county. So Wayne, Oakland, and McComb are working with the prisons right now. And we are, they're embedding recovery coaches, case managers, providing some treatment and then following an individual as they're released from prison and back into the community and for community-based treatment as well. It is an evidence-based program. And so it is going well. It is fairly costly. It'll be something, since this was not on our radar, we were asked to be involved in it, that we'll have to take a look at once the grant is done, if it's something we can continue to do. So as I said, the federal government continues to respond to the crisis. So they want to continue to fund substance use prevention and treatment services. So that's where the State Opiate Response Grant came. Next slide, please. Thank you. Yes, there you go. So what we applied for, they mentioned to us, they had asked for all of my information on the jail program, all our procedures and protocols. The state wanted to take a look at it to see how it was because they wanted to offer it in the State Opiate Response Grant. And I said, okay. And they said, well, are you going to apply? And I said, well, that's called supplanting when you take one federal program and you supplement the program with another federal program. And they said, we realize that, Christina. Okay, how about when the state-targeted response grant ends? And I said, okay. You know, again, we intended to use Public Act II funds, but if we can have additional federal funds that will fund the jail program, then we will do it. We were encouraged by the state of Michigan to apply for this program. And so what I did when I wrote the application was say that it would start on May 1st because the STR grant ends April 30th. And so that's avoiding any crossover of funds. We also applied for the Community Overdose Education and Narcan Distribution. As you well know, we've been supplying it to law enforcement organizations for nearly four years now. And the last part of our strategic plan was to supply it to the community. And that is going to be done through this grant. The Alliance of Coalition for Healthy Communities, they had started this, they had received a grant. And so we postponed funding it through here while they were, while they were providing it through their grant. And then we're sustaining their grant because we applied. Their grant ended through the Beaumont Foundation and we applied for the Community Overdose Education and Distribution and were awarded that. And the Alliance of Coalition for Healthy And the Alliance of Coalition for Healthy Communities will continue also providing that service. And then there was prevention programming as well. The two evidence-based programs that were offered and we selected were Prime for Life and Guiding Good Choices. And then, again, we had a portion of our grant that we did not apply for, but that they approached Oakland and asked for us to receive funds through the State Opiate Response Grant for individualized placement and support, which is related to employment. Next slide, please. Okay. We talked about the jail, Matt, not much more to say. Obviously, the goal with that is to reduce overdose deaths. Leaving prison and jail is a high rate of overdoses that happen. We wanted to increase the follow-through with community providers. I told you, we went from about a 5% follow-through when just given a referral versus about nearly 50% we're at this point. So we wanted to continue the programming, and again, I talked about the fact that it'll start May 1st after STR ends. Sometimes I get ahead of myself when I talk. Okay, so again, this, what's really nice with this is it assists in me finally meeting the annual plan objectives. I had one little piece of this Narcan initiative, which was supplying it to the community, and this closes that gap for me. And so that makes me very happy to have this be offered to the community. So we already, obviously, supply the training and the medications to law enforcement. This will expand it to individuals being trained in the community. And we're looking to have Alliance of Coalition for Healthy Communities do at least two a month, two communities per month. So our prevention programming, they really, the SOAR grant really does target these specific programs, Guiding Good Choices. Great program. It's a family program. It teaches positive parenting skills, family bonding, to decrease or delay the use of substances. One of the biggest protective factors that they've studied, for example, for mitigating the onset of a substance use disorder is having dinner as a family. And they've done some studies that have really shown that. And programs like Guiding Good Choices start with things like a family, dinner together, and then going into program. It's something that's done together. There's also Prime for Life. We know what is really important is to stop a substance use disorder before it even begins, and so it's very important to target youth. And Prime for Life does that. It's youth programming, specific to reduce the use of substances, change belief patterns, risk perceptions. So you want to believe that, for example, using marijuana is a high risk, instead of thinking it's grown out of the ground, so it's safe, which is a lot of times what we combat with adolescents. We want to impact motivations, and just overall knowledge that a person understands, that a youth understands the dangers involved with using substances. So individualized placement and support, fairly large learning curve for me, because this was not traditionally something that was funded for individuals with substance use disorders. Great need, however, though, because individuals with substance use disorders often really struggle with gaining employment. A lot of that oftentimes has to do with the fact that a person has a criminal record and then can't be hired. So, it's focused on using this individual placement and support model to enhance the employment outcomes. That's very exciting. I'm excited to learn even more about the model, and to have it open to individuals we serve. Other states have used this model with individuals who have substance use disorders, with really marked successes, as what we've been told. 50% employment placement rates versus about 5% without using the model. So, we met with the department, Kathleen and Francisco Gamboa, who is our employment person, as you all know, here at OCHN, and myself, to start the discussion and kind of look at what training needs to be done and how we're going to roll this out. Again, it was a bit of a surprise, like the CJ Mission Program, but who are we to turn down something that's going to benefit people we serve? So, we're really looking forward to that. I'm looking forward to learning more about the model and to rolling it out through our provider networks. So, we have some roles in that, and that's one that we have to meet monthly with our consultant, and the designated supervisor of the pilot, as they say. We need to promote the communication and collaboration through different organizations. We need to track, so we need, of course, data. Data's very important, and there's, of course, the need to capture the data here, to track the competitive employment rate. There will be consultant assistance with that as well. And then we do need to develop a quality assurance process to review the model and follow fidelity. As I talked about, we did not apply, but it was, funding was added to our award letter. I just realized that I was going to take a peek at that and tell you what it was, and it went out of my head. So I would have to get back to you if you want to know the exact amount, because I just left my brain. So they did request initially that two staff be hired by November to fulfill the project. However, we received word from the department that their contracts and procurement office isn't done with the contracts, so there will be no funding issued until December, and that all they really advise us to do is maybe post positions, but that no funding prior to December 1 will be given to us. There is no additional, it looks like administrative costs added, or funds added, other than the two staffs. That's something we do have to take a peek at and see how that will impact us. Or maybe that these two positions, everything's covered under the two positions. We have to take a look at it, because it's not something we were prepared for. Some of the considerations is that we need to identify providers. We need to look at any additional administrative time that's required for this, and maybe talk to the department about that. And that it's going to be a new model for individuals with substance use disorders that's never been used, so there'll be some training that we'll need to do with providers to deliver the service, if it's not a provider that already provides it. Any questions about the State Opiate Response Grant?
Really more of a comment. I always learn so much from your presentations, because this was a serious lack of information in my experience along the way, so I do appreciate how clearly you present the information. And I just, my primary comment is, I hope that down the road, we can get more detail on that. Sounds fascinating. Anything that gets people closer to employment, employment that they want, is always a very kind of enriching topic to, and to discuss and to hear about. And it's, I feel good that there's still effort being put into that, so that people can feel, you know, a life that makes sense to them. So, anything that can, as you learn more and do more, if there's
Certainly bring it back to the group, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I had one. I was just a little bit confused about whether or not we would be actually running the program, or would the providers be running the program?
This hasn't really been decided yet.
Oh, okay.
Because again, you know, it's not something we applied for, so, you know, usually when you're applying, you set how it's exactly going to look, because you're proposing what you would do with the funds. And they don't have a preference. The only preference is if it goes through a provider agency, then that we stay involved to monitor and make sure that fidelity is there. So it may actually be staff that are here as well. We haven't gotten to that point yet, so I understand why you're confused, because we're not quite sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for them? Thank you, ladies. Great presentation. Next, we move on to investment account. Morgan Stanley with Patrick and Anya.
Evening, afternoon, evening? I don't know. I'm not sure what time it is. Hope I like it. Patrick, go ahead and lead this presentation, and I'll just be here to fill in if there's any additional questions.
Morgan Stanley update. Some of you have gotten a letter in your box along with this presentation that explained the reason why we're even making this presentation. First of all, Morgan Stanley implemented structural change within their organization that will affect us March 29th of 2019. They notified us that they will no longer act as our custodial for our investment portfolio. So, on our part, we had a decision to make, which will affect us on March 29th. His investment policy is associated with PA 20, and we know that PA 20 consists of a lot of oversight and a lot of restrictions in the policy. And so, Morgan Stanley decided that because of the minimum clientele that they have in this investment niche, they are no longer providing the oversight for that market of securities. This was not inclusive or not exclusive to OCHN. It also was impacted all of their PA 20 clients. So as a result, we, it's changed to OCHN. How does that affect us? First of all, it affects us because our policy will no longer be managed within, it will not be housed there. In other words, the assets will not be housed in Morgan Stanley. They had to pick another custodial, a person to hold the funds. And so, our management of funds will still be done based on the PA 20 investment policy that doesn't change. And while Morgan Stanley plans to continue managing the OCHN assets, they need to be held outside of Morgan Stanley in a segregated account outside of Morgan Stanley. Well, as a result, you have several options, and Morgan Stanley could continue to manage our OCHN investment portfolio, and allow them to choose another bank to hold the assets or act as the custodial, or we could identify a new investment custodial agency of our own choosing. Or three, we could just release a complete management and custodial investment RFP bid, and select different management, as well as custodial, for our investment funds. And so we wanted to be transparent with the board, and because this is a decision that was made that affects our investment, we wanted to notify, you know, the board of this letter that we got, and most of you got in the letter. And it's just to summarize what the letter basically was saying.
Hi, thank you. I appreciate you guys bringing us to the board, and for explaining it so well, Patrick. So thank you. I do have a couple of questions. I'll start with the easy one. Way back, a couple of years ago, we went to them, and we went to, did an RFP, I think it was an RFP, but you chose them, and you chose McKee, and you sort of did 50% of the funds to one, 50% to the other, and sort of like a bake-off, who was going to do a better job for managing funds? Is there, like, another group that we could park this whole thing over, so it's the custodial and the investment, or?
So the way that would work, because we are using the two winners of the bid, is that in order to handle that, what Morgan Stanley has currently, we would need to RFP it again, which we're not opposed to.
So that's the easy question. The second question I have, I gotta find my notes for this. I know that when we did this deal with each of them, there's the two halves. There's the investment side, there's the custodial, that's where, which has always been sort of weird, that, because in my normal personal stuff, you know, you give it to someone to handle, they manage the assets, and they handle the investment all in one thing. With this group, they sort of separated the two, which is really weird. Do we know, let's see, let me see. For another custodial group that we know of, where we could move this money, or what will happen? I guess really, my question is, what will happen to our money if we do nothing? Since I thought it was sort of all in investment vehicles already with them.
If we did nothing, they would, by default, pick a custodial of their choosing. That would be by default, they would have to pick a custodial company of their choosing.
Now, it gets me back onto my track from my next question, which is, okay, so, I know there were, I know when they manage the assets, they get a percentage, not really a fee for doing, they get, it's a fee for managing how big the asset pool is. Was there also a fee for the custodial side? Or did we get interest for putting it in their, into their?
There was a fee. They got an overall fee for managing, and then the holder of the funds get a small percentage as well.
On the custodial side, there was a fee.
There's a percentage.
So there was a fee charged on us to depart the money? And they got to use the money within the PA? Always been weird.
Oh, part of the reason of having a separate custodial came about because of the Madoff rule, where you were holding these funds and making the investment decisions. And so this was a part of the oversight, to keep the funds separate from the actual management.
Like, separate? Separation of duties with accounting, where required to, yeah.
Hinges around, when do you need the money? How it's invested? The PA 20 is very limited. They're limited to limited to government-type investments, and people like ourselves, where you could only invest in certain areas. You make very little interest. And it's a good investment in some respect, if you have the proper money management. This is going to require, and by the way, who is the Bryce Group?
Bryce Group was on the RFP with Morgan Stanley when they did, applied for the RFP.
The Bryce Group will get a fee for holding on to the paper, providing they have good insurance, which we'd have to look at. And also, Morgan Stanley will get a fee, because the Bryce Group, or whoever is chosen, will work for Morgan Stanley. So that fee is split, it isn't even split, each will have their own fee. So that'll add more cost. And Morgan Stanley is not our problem, because they are restricted in their types of investment under PA 20 law. So anybody can do that. You can probably pick 100 different firms, and they'll be within 1/10 of 100 of 100 in fee structures. That is not, and the concern is, how is the money being managed by both entities? And unless you know, and there is, there are ways to hedge funds and interest rates, given the fact that our interest, that interest rates continue to climb up. So if you had a cash needs projection that goes out six months, a year, a year and a half, you would know how, or a good firm would know how to hedge the interest rates on our investments. It's a very complicated issue, we're not going to probably go into it in depth today. It merits looking at. What also merits looking at is an oversight committee, and possibly hiring What also merits looking at is an oversight committee and possibly hiring one individual to manage the funds that are in there. Without a study being made, we'll never know which one is best for us. And a lot of firms, and I consider this a firm, we're talking about a lot of dollars. And as far as Madoff, he didn't have his investments into something like this so protected. If he did, a lot of people would not have been hurt. So, like I say, this all starts with, when do you need the money? How much money will we need? And being able to predict it so that you can do one of two things. You can hedge it or you can sell. It's a slight loss, which it will be, because we bought it relatively low and interest rates keep going up. But a good money manager will figure out whether or not we should take the loss now because we don't need the money, but repurchase it at a higher rate. And that's about, that's about one of my concerns about the situation we find ourselves in right now.
Were you down, Sid? Steve?
Thank you for the explanation of what's going on. These things surprise us and we need the advice. Just want to remind the board that whatever our present policy is, it was brought to us, we discussed it, we approved it. Willie came back because of something in the market and asked for a temporary change in policy to be a little more (inaudible) interest rates. We approved it and then after that was done, we approved to go back to it. So whatever state of needs looking into or not needs looking into is on us, not on the Finance Department or either of the investors, we approve the policy. If it needs changing, then we can discuss it and change it, but it's our policy.
Yeah, sorry, Mary.
So to kind of bring back your presentation, you said that there are three different options that we need to decide whether or not to continue with Morgan Stanley, let them choose the custodial holder, whether we choose a new custodial agency but allow Morgan Stanley to continue to manage, or to go out to RFP and maybe change it completely. Am I understanding that correctly?
Correct.
So we would take action then at the next board meeting to make that decision as to how we would like to go forward? Or will you be making a recommendation that we will be voting on at the next meeting?
Whatever you'd like. Whether you would like us to make the recommendation and you guys can vote on it, or if you would like to make the recommendation from the board's perspective, that's whatever you'd like.
Thank you. So with all that in mind, that we have a number of options here, with just this portion or even with both investment groups or companies that are doing the work, do we know how, up till now, how the two groups have been doing performance head-to-head on the quote-unquote bake-off, if you will?
We could provide analysis of variance and difference between both groups. The other group is already separated. They manage the assets and fifth third hold the assets. So this is not a problem for the CS McKee Group. It's only unique to the Morgan Stanley because they made an internal change to move the asset outside.
So theoretically, we could put, have just fifth third be the custodial for all of it, let the two investment groups go head-to-head, continue to do that? If that makes sense, or if it need, if you guys think it makes sense to revisit that and go to yet a third one, or go to, I've heard county investment or other alternatives for the PA?
So that you have a little more information too? Because what happened was when Morgan Stanley made a decision to exit this market, our relationship manager was affected by this change because that was the niche that he operated within. So that meant all his clientele would not, no longer be with Morgan Stanley. He made a decision to move to another bank. Morgan Stanley said that they're not putting the expertise and the oversight into this market. So I don't, you know, if you're not going to put the oversight into our investments and make prudent decisions, we want to keep our assets with you to make the management decisions for our investments.
My mind is that I'd like to see perhaps something presented to us as to what your recommendation would be. I guess I'm leaning, if anyone is, we're thinking about what we're leaning towards, I'd be leaning towards seeing an RFP so that we are making good choices and we're not pigeonholed into the two that we're in right now, or based upon your recommendation how we should be thinking. So I guess the powers that be need to make this decision.
I would make the comment that previously we had a document prepared, and I think Matt was responsible for it, that laid out the pros and the cons and the options. And I think that this might be a great opportunity to have that information laid out in the same way so that we can look at it and feel better informed. I mean, I think there probably is an upside and a downside to a lot of different angles on this. So if we could have that kind of information provided to us, it seems to me that would be really helpful.
Also like a recommendation from us as well to come with that?
Absolutely, sure.
So we can bring, we can bring that to the board meeting?
If we had the pros and the cons and the recommendation, I think we could make a fairly lucid and comprehensive decision, if that works. Does that work?
Do that.
Yes, no? That was the other thing. What is the timeline that you think is?
April 9th is when?
Well, I know that's when everything goes away. But what would be, in your mind, a reasonable deadline for making such a decision? Later than? Certainly don't have to wait that long.
Certainly if we're going, if we're going to go to RFP, we don't want to wait too long, just because that process does take time. And if the board, the last time we RFP'd this, the board did participate. So if the board, then that changes the timing a little bit as well. So I just want to make sure if we're going to lean towards that, we're going to allow enough time to do so.
And probably we'd need something in December.
I just, I just don't want to rush it.
Not in five days, but I think that would give us a reasonable amount of time based on what you think is the deadline we should observe.
I was just going to say, yes, certainly at any time the staff can generate recommendations. And I agree, Judy, the format that Matt drafted with this is the pros, this is the cons, this is what we're weighing, this is why we're making a recommendation. I do just want to go on record though, that I know this is an area that board members have input. So by all means, when I've met with the finance staff, they are open to hearing suggestions, input, and we want it to be a collaborative decision that we can all get behind. So if we think staff generating pros, cons, and recommendations is the good starting point, I just want us all to buy in on whatever we decide.
That's what I wanted to be clear on. So we're going to have pros, cons, a few alternatives, but the one alternative that you recommend as well. And then we can make that decision, give you enough lead time so that if it's an RFP, you have time to do it along with the year-on-close that goes on. Because I know that's going on at the same time.
Right, so that's again, the timing situation right now is kind of critical just because we are in the midst of state reporting, year-end, all of that. So when we, the sooner we make a decision, then we can plan. And then like I said, if you all want to participate, then that just helps us plan the timing a little better.
Matt, do you think there's any possibility that, in conjunction with all these good points that were just brought forward, is there any possibility of having that cash flow analysis completed for at least six months out? So that it can be matched up against the bonds that are expiring versus the monies that we're going to need? And that will give us an indication as to how much money we could have under management and how much money we could have in the daily money market fund. And as far as paying a fee for people like the Bryce Group, there are companies, there are law firms in New York that specialize in this business of holding the paper. All they're doing is holding your certificate of deposit and as long as they have insurance, and I'm not talking about a combined insurance for all their clients, which limits our exposure and their exposure, then we can really bid it out, depending on how much money we have that will dictate, under management, that's going to dictate the rate that we will have to pay for the people holding the paperwork. It's a lot of sense, but.
I'm going to defer to Anya on, do you understand the request he's asking for, for the six-month cash flow projection? Is that something as far as timeline are feasible?
Oh, we'll work it into the year-end stuff, just bear with us a bit, because this is audit time and year-end processing, so we're, you know, juggling some of that, but we will, it might not be by the board meeting, but we can certainly get something together.
Any one more caveat? Even if we can do estimates, because this is a running market, so to speak, and if we could get estimates on that six-month analysis, that would give us some good added value to what this project is about.
What I, at least from my perspective, I see that we're really looking at the rest of the fiscal, the rest of the fiscal year we're in now for cash flow. So that's the cash versus an accrual of what we think comes in monthly, the 1/12ths, and what we pay out the 1/12ths. Right?
Can you make a comment on that? I don't, Jonathan, it's a good, it's a good question. I just want to clarify the accrual part. So it's the cash plus the accrual. But the accrual, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying it's the cash, the actual cash comes in, actual expense goes out versus the 1/12ths that we, we take every, or they take, I don't say we, they take and we divide it up by 1/12ths. That's the accrual approach. But we, cash flow says you have to know how much real cash you have. Okay.
I have one question. I'm not a financial person, so I get easily confused and I don't mind saying that I am. But in the back of my mind, I remember hearing that certain things that you can do in a public sector, you can't do in a quasi-governmental?
Those are the, the PA 20 is the rules we have, that we have to follow related to our investments.
I would like to know what the?
Rules are?
Yes.
Yeah.
So as we make the determination so that we know what we can and can't do?
Provide that.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? Thank you. We have PA 152, a lot of PAs, healthcare benefit contribution with Ms. White.
It's PA highlight day, I guess. Very much for permitting me to come and do this annual presentation. For the record, today I will be presenting the information for you to consider as we request this opt-out, which I will go through. The actual vote will be occurring at the regular board meeting later this month. So the first slide gives you some background. In 2012, we became subject to the legislative requirements of Public Act 152. And this particular mandate imposed a requirement that employees of public sector organizations in the state of Michigan pay a certain amount for their health insurance. It could either be 20% of the organization's cost for the health insurance, or there would be a flat dollar amount, which would be a limit to the amount that the organizations could pay for the health insurance, and employees would be required to pay the difference. As part of this legislation, there were provisions passed as part of it that would permit organizations to opt out of these requirements. And the conditions would be that the board would have to approve an opt-out. So since 2012, I have come before this body to make a request that we do allow our employees to opt out of this requirement. And I have given sound reasons, we believe, that would support this request. I like to start by describing the benefit plan structure that we have for health insurance at Oakland Community Health Network. Rather than purchase an off-the-shelf Blue Cross Blue Shield product and manage that product alone, we have partnered with a health insurance management organization, Daily Merit. They were recently bought out by an organization called Assured Partners. So I have to train myself to now refer to them as Assured Partners. They do have some expertise working with public organizations throughout the state. And what they assist us with is monitoring our healthcare costs. They look at the landscape of healthcare across the state and across the nation, and they shop around to help us make good decisions about our healthcare. So one of the recommendations that they made and we have adopted since plan year 2013 has been to form our own hybrid healthcare plan. So we have purchased an off-the-shelf product from Blue Cross Blue Shield. It's a high deductible healthcare plan. And what we have decided to do was to self-fund the deductible portion of the, of the health insurance. So we have a very predictable amount that we pay according to the number of folks covered under our plan. And that predictable amount is easy to manage. But at the same time, we do have a self-funded health reimbursement account to cover the deductible. And we're able to manage that just by examining, you know, what the risk level is and, you know, managing what we can in terms of the risk to the organization through that self-funded health reimbursement account. We also have decided that it has been in our best interest to self-fund our prescription plan. And we've managed to do this by changing the tiers that we have in terms of the generics, brand name, and specialty medications. So when we look at some of the outcomes that we've realized as a result of managing our healthcare costs in the way that we do, we did have a recent meeting with the representatives from our insurance providers, and we've had a chance to look at some data. So right now, with the plan structure that we have, almost all of our employees have decided to participate in our plan. 156 of 160 eligible employees have enrolled. We're currently covering 376 participants. So we have a 98% planned participation. We've had really good results. We have some incentives for our employees to visit urgent care and do preventive services. So we've really been able to drive down our emergency room visits. So they only represent 2% of all of the medical visits that our employees have taken, at least through 831. And right now, we have found that only 1% of the employees that we cover incurred costs that met the deductible maximum. So our deductible maximum is $5,000, and we've only had 1% of employees that have actually had costs that have met that deductible. So we have been really aggressive with making sure that our employees understand through preventive services, through making sure that you manage. through making sure that you manage your medications effectively. It keeps their costs down, it keeps our costs down. Additional outcome measures, when you look at the prescription plan, we have a generic utilization rate of 84%. We find that our specialty medications, folks are using our specialty medications, and it only represents 13% of our overall drug costs. The national average is 41%. So we have been very aggressive with getting the word out to make sure our employees are able to use generic medications and branding drugs that are included in our standard formulary. Our plan cost per employee per month has actually gone down 4% over the previous period in 2017. And this is in spite of us hiring more employees. When we look at all of the data that we've been able to get, we are able to illustrate a commitment on the part of our employees to seek treatments at the most cost-effective level. And we have also ramped up our wellness and preventive services. So we are always provided with illustrative rates compared to a fully insured plan. If we were to purchase a plan that gives us the same results if we were to purchase this off-the-shelf. And right now, we're looking at a savings of almost half a million dollars compared to a fully insured plan that has the structure that our plan has. So we want to share with you some of the things we're doing because this is something that we look at at a regular basis in the HR committee meetings. We review our health plan data on a monthly basis. And we're always looking at things that we can do to drive our costs down even further. So we have made changes to our pharmacy benefit by adding additional tiers to the plan. Again, the promotion of the preventive services, improved wellness initiatives. We've brought Weight Watchers in-house. So we have a lot of employees that participate in the Weight Watchers. The fitness center is open, and we have a good number of employees that use that on a regular basis. Also, the emphasis on going to have your regular medical checkups for yourself and your family, getting your immunizations. Again, the focus on the generic drugs, not just signing up to take the generic drugs, but actually making sure that you're taking them and having those prescriptions filled and having good compliance with that. We did conduct an employee satisfaction survey recently. And one of the reasons why we conducted this survey, especially with us having a new CEO coming in, she wanted to get a sense of the landscape of what the employees appreciated about their employment here. And we do sometimes struggle with being competitive with the private sector in terms of salaries that we can pay folks that come into our organization. So we continue to focus on being creative on the benefit side. And very clear in the outcome of the employee satisfaction survey was a request that we maintain our current premium coinsurance and deductible plan structure for our employees. I did include a quote directly from the survey. This is an anonymous survey, so I'm not sure which one of the staff members included this in their comments. But it did, I'd say, match a theme throughout the survey. The particular employee said, "It is in the best interest of OCHN to remain competitive as an employer to sustain dedicated quality staff. Studies show this is great for office morale and productivity. I hope we are able to maintain the same benefits." So that was a request. And again, I think it was reflective of the general theme that we saw in that employee survey. So from our perspective, the leadership team believes that by being able to manage the benefit plan ourselves rather than having to comply with a mandate from the state, this helps us to be creative and to find ways that we can attract people to the organization and retain the talented staff that we have. So we believe this is ultimately going to result in great outcomes for people served. So in summary, these particular points we'd like to make here is our focus on offering competitive pay and benefits to our staff. We really rely on their knowledge, skills, and expertise. We are consistently monitoring our healthcare costs, our expenditures, and the options that are available to us out there. And the legislative mandate constrains our ability to be flexible in terms of designing our compensation plan and our benefits package. And we do want to make sure that we can continue to attract the people that can help us continue to pursue our annual and strategic plan goals. So there is a copy of the resolution in your packet. We ask that you review the resolution. Again, the official vote will occur at the next board meeting. And this information is being submitted to you for your consideration and for your approval. And that's about all the prepared information that I have. I'm prepared to take any questions that you have at this time.
Thank you. Edna, thank you very much for bringing this up every year. So I have three questions. In the past, we used a PBM in the RX area called EHIM.
Yes.
EHIM, are they still part of all this?
They're still part of this. We get monthly reports from them. And they were present at the meeting that we had last month. And they shared some of these success stories that we've had in terms of our prescription utilization.
They're the ones that help you understand our 4% savings year over year.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We have, and I know that you said that we had a $450,000-plus savings versus a normal kind of healthcare program for this.
Well, actually, that savings would be if we were able to purchase a plan that is designed to provide the same benefits that we have. So by us, you know, having that hybrid plan, this is the comparable savings.
We know, we know we had a 4% change on the RX, the scrip side. Do we know how much of an increase or a decrease in cost per person with this plan we have? Because this is similar to the same kind of plan we had last year and the prior few years. Do we know if this is year-over-year savings?
It varies. A lot of that has to do with the price of the off-the-shelf product that we have from Blue Cross. So this year, that increase was 9.6%. I think two years ago, we actually had a tremendous savings. So it varies. And that's the beauty of having the HRA, you know, because we're able to, you know, see significant savings as a result of having that HRA rather than just being on the hook for purchasing an off-the-shelf product.
My last question is, I think it's really good that we get to see the piece or get an idea of the benefits package that's in this. But I always wondered, as we vote for adoption of this resolution every year, why not make it just a policy that we enact and we don't have to then vote for the PA 152 acceptance every year?
Not aware of an option where you cannot vote for this. Oakland County also does a vote every year. That's another act that we could refer to so that we don't have to do this.
I would... Like all employees, you have to go into open enrollment. So it's the contract for services is renewed every year.
We do go with an annual plan year model.
So that's why we have to vote every year.
Any other questions for Edna? Thank you, Edna.
I will not be present when we have the vote later on this month. But members of the HR team will be present. Yes, Jerry Lyons and Glenda Witherspoon will be here.
Is on you not being here.
No, I have a great HR team.
That's true.
And they work very hard to offer a wonderful benefits package for all the staff. So we thank you for that.
Thank you. Next, we have our board calendar.
I don't know why this always provides so much annual entertainment, but the calendar is always kind of a challenge. Before we actually get to what the process will be, I just want to remind everybody that in December, our meetings are back-to-back. On Monday, December 17th, is the Committee of the Whole. And on Tuesday, the 18th, is our board meeting. And I just want to double-check and make sure that everybody is aware and that that still works for everybody. We've had that very seldom, but we have had that happen before. So just as a reminder, we will be meeting back-to-back the week of December 17th. Committee of the Whole, next day, board meeting. It's to accommodate last night of Hanukkah and Christmas. I'm a little puzzled.
Questions?
I was trying to figure out how Committee of the Whole was on either one of those. But now I get it, it's not the committee, it's the board meeting. That's early, essentially.
Actually, the Committee of the Whole is late.
Late.
And it's the proper timing for the board meeting. But the delay... Last night of Hanukkah is the 10th, which would be our normal Committee of the Whole night. Jonathan might not be in charge of the social calendar at home. I'm just guessing.
I'm not, but I did bring, I did do the look-up of all the Jewish holidays for next year, just in case, and there's no conflicts.
It was amazing, wasn't it? I did the same thing. It was like Wednesday, Thursday, I mean, nights that we really didn't have conflict. Steve?
I just checked the CMHA Spring Conference conflicts with our June 10th Committee of the Whole meeting because it's 6:10, 11, and 12. And our meeting is scheduled on this calendar, June 10th. I don't usually, usually in May, but I have this... There'll be a meeting at night.
That's when we do the...
One.
There's location to be determined. It's the one that's usually...
Okay, all the conferences? From the same place every year?
Looking at the wrong calendar, anyway. It's in suburban collection, Novi. And the meeting with the executive board and the member assembly would be June 10th. Because it's Monday night, the same night, so...
Maybe that's going to be another one of those back-to-back opportunities, if you can call it an opportunity. But it could be that that's the adjustment we'll need to make. Everybody, this will be voted on at the board meeting. So please take an additional look, come up with some alternatives, and see where we can go. I don't think it's highly desirable to have the committee and the board meeting back-to-back. But if there's no other way, that's what we'll do.
So had some room for the very first week of the month?
In the past, and I don't know where that stands currently, but in the past, a lot of the, if it's primarily informational presentations, then it may not be an issue. But if there's something that, the first week is not always the week where everybody has all the information they need to bring forward to a Committee of the Whole. And that's been the challenge in the past. I don't know where that stands currently. I'm new to this job, so...
Other thing I'm going to make the request on, it's a 3 to 6 for the COWs, Committee of the Holes. And I know I'm working. Ask again every, like I do every year, but I don't think... 4 to 7.
We will finalize the calendar at the board meeting if people want to consider if they're able to manage that change or not. We can certainly discuss that at that time, but keep that in mind, too, when you're looking at the calendar. That would work for me just fine. And we could take a vote and see how that plays out, if that's okay. That's fine. No, this is the time. This is exactly the moment to do that, so...
We have eight people here now. We had postponed the discussion of people on committees. Now we have eight board members here. Do you think that's enough to discuss it? Because...
Are we all, are all the comments that people are going to make regarding the calendar complete? And we can move on to Victoria? If you, that would probably be the, if you have the opportunity to review, I should say, take the opportunity to review and let me know any conflicts, and then I can forward them. I can see if there's a common theme also. Or back-to-back and delays of that sort, too. But yes, use me as your point person on that kind of feedback, if that works. Also available to share with you at the board meeting, okay?
Back to your question, Steve.
Okay. My question was, we had postponed the discussion on who should sit on which committees to the, whenever we postponed it to, because there was only like four board members here. Now there's eight. So is that enough?
I hesitate because normally we ask people what's their preference. And I wouldn't want to make a decision when we have three people not here, four people not here. I don't want to be presumptuous about whether or not they want to sit on those committees. That's just my opinion, but see if you can weigh in.
And you brought up a good point. It's one less item for the agenda, you know, for our board discussion. And it's a discussion that should be held at a study session. At a study session.
Committee?
Committee of the Whole, yeah.
Committee appointments for which committee people want to sit on? Judy?
I would say that our attendance at a board meeting is probably more likely to be higher than at a study session. So I would prefer that it be at a board meeting, in my opinion.
Either way, it's fine. They both have merit.
I'm not sure it has any relevance at all, given that we meet as a Committee of the Whole. So it wouldn't, and it doesn't really matter, since we're at a COW meeting, whether you're on policy and you ask a finance question, or you're on finance or business ops and you ask a policy question. So we know we have to have assignments because we have an odd number in an even-numbered committee, but it sort of seems immaterial.
Our bylaws indicate five on the Business Operations Committee, six on Policy Management. How we use that going forward? But that is, I think, being consistent with our bylaws is important.
Perhaps if we do have it, let's put it towards the end of the agenda because some people may come in afterwards after the start of the meeting.
End of the board meeting.
Yeah, whatever meeting we decide to do it.
I wonder why I'm sliding back and forth. The visibility here is not very good. So I'm trying to get out of Mel Kaya's way so she can see who's raising their hand. It can be at, just before we adjourn. It can be just prior to, after a next report, just before. I mean, we can keep it toward the end, assuming nobody needs to leave early. It happens. We'll put it in the middle. It's going to be in the middle.
Discussion we just had is probably going to, is longer probably than the selection of the members of the committee is going to be.
Probably. Been that plus.
Is everyone good? So we will put this on the agenda for the board meeting.
In the middle.
In the middle? In the middle, or close to the end. However it shakes out. Okay. This is our second opportunity for a public comment. Is there anyone in the audience desires to make public comment at this time? I don't see a mad rush for the mic. Okay. Any board member comments?
Oh, there was an email of, of updates and activities going on Friday evening, and I wasn't sure when we wanted to discuss those kinds of, of... At the next board study. This is the auditors and the topic.
Right, that's a good question. So I was giving everybody a heads up that we were going to have to explore who we're using as our finance audit firm. Right now, I don't think we have enough details to have a conversation on it, but yeah, we're going to have to make that decision. So, you know, as I said in the email, we're talking about looking at Genesee and the bid process. I don't even know who responded to the bid process, so we're seeking more information, and we definitely will get it in front of you for some more decision-making and dialogue. It was really just a heads up that we're going to have to take a look at it.
I was gonna, I was recommending that maybe I need to dust off the RFP process that we did before to know who, who did we like from an evaluation perspective then? And if it's one of the Genesee, then it seems to be pretty straightforward. If it isn't, you know...
When we have more information, we'll definitely have more dialogue with the board about that.
Any other board member comments? Now this meeting is adjourned.